To order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, Tuesday, May 16. Please rise. Pastor Lee Carlisle from the United Methodist Church will give us our invocation, and Councilmember Don Brand will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, we give thanks for the blessings that we have received this day, for the love of family and friends, for the beauty of sun and sky, and for the gift of life itself. We also thank you for this time when we gather together for the common to promote well-being and to share our hopes and dreams for the city in which we work, play, and live. Guide tonight's meeting and those who serve as our leaders, Mayor Fuentes, Mayor Potemboils, and Councilmembers Brand, Dugan, and Pertstuck. Bless all who come to speak with clarity and conviction. May we work together for the good of all. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States, one nation, and to God, physicality, and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan, you have a proclamation?
I do. This is our central to the health, safety, and general well-being of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and facilities such as storm drains, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these systems and facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and maintenance, are vitally dependent upon the effort, whereas the efficiency of said professionals who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city, the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the city of El Segundo, and call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the kind to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And accepting the National Public Works Week proclamation is our director, Mr. Ken Berkman. Ken?
Do a separate one with his daughter. Thank you. Then can we have another photo with his daughter in it? Come on up with your dad. Yeah, we're gonna do more photo with Beto's daughter, since he brought her today. Very nice.
I see you got your hats, your official public works hats, little gift for Public Works Week.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for this proclamation and recognizing how much work. To start with, I'd really like to introduce one of our key leaders in our department, and very proud for me to say, our City Employee of the Year, Streets Supervisor Beto Moreno. To say when it comes to public health and safety, that there are three key departments in our city, police, fire, and public works. You hope you go through your life not having to really call upon police and fire, but with public works, you know, we're here playing every underground in the background. We're doing a good job if you don't know we're there. So if you think about it, from the time you wake up to the time you go back to bed, and even when you sleep, public works is at work. The water you take, it's treated and likely reused. The water that you make your coffee with comes from the high tank on Lomita. You and tens of thousands of commuters in our city utilize the streets in a myriad of ways to get to and from your destinations during all our storm of the ocean with our crews out there the whole time in heavy rain to protect us. And for all of us here working in city facilities and using city vehicles and equipment, we can all count on public works to be there to ensure our comfort. And our city engineer, Leifan Chu, can't be here at the moment. Hey, come on up. I don't know where he was. He's busy.
He's stuck in behind you.
Leifan Chu, our city engineer, that we will speak to later tonight, working with planning and building and safety to make sure proper development occurs in our city, as well as ensuring compliance with the many environmental rules and regulations on the books. It's easy to see how critical public works is to us in our city. We thank you, and we remain ready to serve.
Thank you. We have one more proclamation this evening. Act during a cardiac emergency because they either do not know how to administer CPR, or their training has significantly lapsed. Whereas, more than 350,000 people suffered from cardiac arrest in the United States last year. And whereas, citizens were to cardiac arrest, and the overall survivor rate was 12%. And whereas, 70% of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur in the home. And whereas, it has been proven that early access to emergency medical system, early CPR, 27A cardiac arrest. And whereas, the El Segundo Fire Department and the American Red Cross have historically provided exemplary emergency medical care and training, and continue this tradition with Super CPR Saturday. And whereas, El Segundo High School provides a critical L that accommodate the training of approximately 300 people. And whereas, Super CPR Saturday receives generous financial and in-kind support from our corporate sponsors, Chevron, NRG, Teledyne Controls, Continental Development Corporation, Embassy Civil, and Clockwork Enterprises that enable this valuable community event to be held. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim Saturday, May 20, 2017, as Super CPR Saturday. Chief is gonna accept tonight, but I see our fire marshal here. Oh, good. Our fire marshal, James Carver, here too, who plays such an integral part in all of this.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much once again for this proclamation. This is indeed an important day for us, and the fire department is proud of a service that we deliver through our paramedic. More business owners than the visitors, the importance of CPR, and so we're a proud supporter of this, and we're fortunate to have Fire Marshal James Carver, who will say a few words. He's really the main driver behind this event, and we're just a Saturday being a great success.
Thank you, chief. Mayor, Mayor Potemboils, councilmembers, real quick. 22 years ago, when Mike Sullivan, the resident of town, came to me and said, hey, we had to do one while Boles is doing it, so I think Chevron can. And let's do it. So we started doing it. Luckily, I know that on December 5, 2010, I had a sudden death heart attack. And it was through training new to the cardiac chain of survival was met very well, because I'm here today. First, my wife Julie was able to recognize the emergency. She got herself away far enough from desperate housewives to find me. My save-a-year will be, was there to be able to assess me, call 911, and start CPR. Orange County Fire Authority paramedics from Engine 62 responded in cardioverted media, medium link of the chain, which is early AED. In this case, it was defibrillation by paramedics, advanced medical care, and then six months later, I was back on the job. It's CPR is why I'm here. This gives me more, it's not, it's a family member. And we're here to teach it. It's free. You can go online, El Segundo website, click on the Super CPR link. It's all automated now, packet sheets. It was crazy, right, Carl? Yeah, it was. And Carl will do his magic. And but now it's all automatic with the help of Carl and his daughter Jill. So thank you very much.
Fire Marshal Carver, thank you, Julie and Brian. If you haven't attended the training, I encourage everyone to go. When they tell their story in the high school auditorium, you could hear a pin drop. It's riveting, and it's life-saving. So thank you very much. So now we have a presentation.
Madam Mayor, city council, this is a new regulation that's coming. We're anticipating implementation July 1. This is a brand-new regulation that's related solely to refineries, council in the community, and I'd like to introduce our consultant, Steve Coaster, who's running our CUPA program, who is, we're very fortunate to have him here, and he has some good information. So.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. So I'm gonna be talking about a new program that the city's gonna be undertaking. It's a safety program, and it applies to the city, El Segundo Fire Department. We are a CUPA, a Certified Unified Program Agency. We oversee five different programs. Hazardous material, emergency materials over a certain threshold, required to submit a plan to the state. That information is available to the firemen. In the event of an emergency, that information would be given to them. Under, they're not leaking, like this one did. This was actually found in the street. It was abandoned. So we do annual inspections to ensure that they're not leaking. Above-ground petroleum storage tanks, to ensure water. Hazardous waste generator program, to ensure that businesses that generate hazardous waste manage that in a manner that would not harm the environment. Program. It's a program to protect the community from extremely hazardous materials being handled by businesses, applies to chemicals that could have potential off-site consequence, impact the community. Requires a written plan to be prepared by the business, and the plan currently has three tiers or levels, depending on the severity of the material and the volume that they have. For, for refineries. And the regulations are going to be finalized July 1, 2017, and they will go into effect immediately. So it's just around the corner. This was on improving public and worker safety at oil refineries. It was a commissioned report. The report determined that there was additional safety things that the refineries could be doing, and they decided that, so some of the elements, damage mechanism reviews. It's an existing part of the program. Hierarchy of hazard control analysis, you know, reviewing those hazards. And then one of the new factors is human factors. Management of organizational change. Root cause analysis. Safeguard protection analysis. And the last one, process safety culture assessment. So you can look at these, and these new ones really get more in-depth with how personnel are dealt with, and the safety at the facility. After program shall take into account the complexity of tasks, the level of training, expertise of employees, the human-machine, human-system interface, physical challenges of the work environment in which the task is performed, employee, really looking at not just the equipment there, but the people actually working there. What conditions do those people have? And then just some of the factors, the human-human interface, human-machine interface, key mansions of the human factor. Management of organizational change. The employer shall develop, implement, and maintain written procedures to manage organizational changes. So the facility prior cutting's impact, will that have on safety? And it also applies to employers using contractors in permanent positions. So they can't say they're not employees, even though they're working there. Normally, they have not been included. Root cause analysis. This type of analysis focuses on identifying the underlying causes of an incident, and then recommending corrective actions to prevent a recurrence. Typically, root cause or analysis. This actually looks at, why did it happen? For example, an incident that appears to be the result of worker inattention might, following root cause analysis, reveal underlying pressures in the organizational work environment that motivate workers. So recommendations from this investigation would focus on those aspects, and not just solely on strategies to improve worker vigilance. And then process safety culture assessment. The facility actually has to look the culture and evaluate how good their culture is. The group's culture reflects the attitudes, beliefs, perceptions, and values that employees share relation to safety. The safety culture assessments determine a culture that values safety. So it really has to come from the top. They have to really be behind it. They can't just say, oh, we want safety. They have to really demonstrate that they're creating a safety environment. The US, they have probably one of the highest records in safety. And so they have definitions on what safety culture is. So preparation for the new regulations, fire department staff continues to, we're constantly looking at what's going on and working to prepare for this. Staff has taken specialized training on human factors. Actually, at the end of this month, training on root cause analysis, and also has fee structures needed to support the program for. But it is gonna be quite an undertaking for us to do this. In summary, El Segundo will continue to work with the Chevron refinery to improve safety elements of the, really, the focus of this is to protect the community. The city will not have to be relying on OSHA. So we have control of this program. If you guys want more being done, you can tell us that we, that's the advantage of having your own agency. Most cities rely on the county. You can call the county up, and you may or may not get a response. You're always gonna get a good response from us. The fire department will be more, is that are known to prevent incidents, supporting safety culture at Chevron. We're just going to better improve our relationship with the refinery. Refinery is such a major part of the city, and we want to be really, any questions?
That was a great assessment. Thank you, Officer Coaster. I'm curious, what was the catalyst for this? Was there an incident or a series of incidents?
One of the big ones was the 2012 accident up in Richmond. And what happened was, there was equipment that became brittle over time, and they hadn't properly assessed it in an incident. Pretty large.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And this plan coming from the safest refinery in America, trying to take that even to the next level.
Correct. Yeah. They were happy with the job OSHA was doing, and they felt we could do a better job.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Go Chevron. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Los Angeles, DWP.
Mayor members of council, we actually have one power plant in our city and one power plant next to our city, and they're both going through, or will be going through construction. The NRG plant in El Segundo, off Vista del Mar, they're gonna remove the two property for future use, potentially for a desalinization plant. So those towers, those smokestacks will leave our skyline. The other power plant that's next to our city is the LA DWP Scattergood Plant, which is at Grand and Vista, a number of years as they replace their units with more environmentally friendly, more efficient power units. DWP approached staff probably two months ago, and asked to brief us on what was going on, and also to brief the council and the commission that's going on currently. That was fine. I did ask them to also be prepared to respond to other comments or questions about the operations of Scattergood, and then some ancillary things, like what's going on with Grand Avenue with the side of Grand. So I believe they're prepared to respond to those types of questions as well. There's also gonna be a construction project after the demolition, which will involve an environmental impact report. The city has provided comments on the notice of prep. With that, I'll turn it over to the DWP staff.
Good evening. This is a good distance volume. All right, this is a new territory for me. My name is Ian Guthrie with LA DWP, and I'm the project manager for all of our major projects. Scatter, project that's just being completed, the construction of Units 4 through 7 there, and the demolition that's occurring here, and then this proposed construction, which will happen in the future. So we have a little presentation, just to keep you guys in the loop and appraised. So we'll just have a brief overview of our project. That's the demolition project is what we're focusing on right now. A little bit of what to expect. Being a good neighbor, you guys informed, and then any Q and A. It's the demolition of Scattergood Generating Station, Unit 3. That's the unit that is to the south of the old power block. So it's the boiler, as we would have called it, and the turbine generator that would have been. Removing that unit, it's roughly about an 18-month project, although the project start did not have any major demolition activities in it. There was a lot of prep for us to be able to physically separate the unit so that we could safely do the demo contractors, since it's adjacent to existing units which are still in operation. Right now, we're looking to be complete with the demolition by February or the end of January of 2018. So right now is when we're really starting to do activities. So you'll start to see large pieces of equipment coming down. The stack will be, you know, starting to come down perhaps the early summertime. The reason that we're doing this particular project is, is we have an obligation to demonstrate to the South Coast Air Quality Management District, or the SCA QMD, that we have permanently disabled Unit 3. So Unit 3 was repowered between 2013, and that was an obligation that we had with the AQMD through a settlement agreement, which goes back to about 2000. And that was to effectively replace units at Scattergood, specifically Unit 3 in this case, with a more efficient, lower air emissions. And that completed our obligation with the SCA QMD per this settlement agreement. One of the outstanding pieces of that, though, is to say, okay, now that you've installed new units, which are cleaner, more efficient, to show, you don't get to have both of them. So demolishing the unit is the, you know, sort of penultimate way to demonstrate that disablement. So that was one of the big drivers for us, is to go ahead and address any potential, you know, longstanding, long-term safety, and to address our, you know, demonstration, yes, it is in fact disabled, and we will no longer have any air emissions generated from that unit. In addition to that, as was alluded to by Mr. Carpenter, the unit is also being demolished to help. We have another obligation, which is to the State Water Resource Control Board, which is to shut down the units at Scattergood and our other coastal facilities within DWP, and no longer use ocean water for cooling purposes, to use the ocean water there. Scattergood Units 1 and 2 will continue to use ocean water until we replace those. We currently have a compliance deadline of December 2024. We are hoping to complete that project much sooner than that, which would involve installing a, in the existing footprint of Unit 3. That said, we are obviously under some trying times right now with respect to the environmental climate, political climate, and so we are working towards, that's ongoing for that project. We have, as was alluded to as well, put out our initial, notice of initial study, and we have gone through our analysis. But we have some things we need to fine-tune and make sure are 100. So we will certainly keep the city of El Segundo very much informed, and have the opportunity to provide comment and, you know, entertain any discussion regarding the project and what the future of the facility looks like, in light of some of the concerns that have been brought up within our overall city council. Moving forward, as far as, again, the demolition project, things that you can expect, absolutely within the ordinance hours, the noise ordinance hours here in El Segundo, respecting that. So there are times where it could be potentially 7:00 AM to 6:00, roughly typical day shift, so 7:00 AM to maybe 3:00, 3:30 PM, and really respect not having the noise associated with that type of activity ongoing beyond that. All of, overall, the trucking, the routing to the city of El Segundo. So utilizing the Vista del Mar, our access gates within, along Vista del Mar up to Imperial Highway and to the 105 in and out. So really trying to be mindful of and not have any of this. We've had a couple of very short-duration closures on and around Grand and Vista del Mar. It had been coordinated to be, you know, early morning, 3:00 to 4:00 AM-ish, or 5:00 AM at the latest, and it's just been to bring in the equipment, excavator onsite. So it's very minimal for us overall, the impact there. But we do have obviously crews to help support dealing with managing traffic to keep things safe for our personnel and for the people that are using Vista del Mar overall. Fun out of it for the spectators, but it also keeps it safe. That was one of our biggest concerns here, especially since this particular power plant is still in operation, literally connected to what we're trying to remove. So we're really doing what we're calling like a surgical disassembly of the unit. We're taking, it's significantly more time-consuming and definitely more costly way of doing it. We believe that is the best way to deal with this, especially in light of the neighborhood, light of the adjacent units and the personnel and the public, everything else. As you know, you see, if you happen to go down Grand Avenue and use that to go to the beach, you'll see that we're bringing down bits of paneling around the building facade at this point, and taking down parts of the major structures. They're gonna be doing some cutting of, remove some of those original foundations. Just fairly cut and dry demolition, once you actually do the surgical removal of the big equipment. So we definitely are, you know, understand how close we are to the neighborhood, and we want to respect that, you know, the best extent possible. We are doing daily testing and monitoring for noise around the perimeter of the facility. We're also checking vibration and monitoring right in the vicinity of the actual demolition activities, just to ensure that there's no significant dust issues and that we have, anything that might be in the air is significantly less than any personnel exposure limit. So we're well- So we're well below metals and other constituents that would be concerned about. So again, we have to keep our personnel safe. We also need to keep the public safe. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn now from everybody here in El Segundo in the loop, and then we can come back for the questions.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Catterell with Community Affairs with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. So I just want to go through very quickly some of the outreach that we have done. Has also been mailed to the local addresses and residents around the project. So it was over three or 4,000 residents that we mailed the fact sheets so everyone would know what was going on, what to expect. And we had several briefings. The council member, City Council Member, LA Bonin's office has been informed. We are going to, we're briefing you guys tonight. And we are also reaching out to the Manchester Project. We've created an information line, so if anyone has any questions, concerns, they can call this information line number right there. We also have a website that has the, an email, scattergood3@ladwp.com, and we have the capabilities of blasting out updates. We'll also provide updates on our website. And we'll use social media to inform people about it through social media as well. So that's pretty much it for our community outreach.
Okay, so I guess at this point, putting up the questions anybody might have.
That was good. Couple things, Greg touched on it earlier. The tank that you guys are no longer using for oil at the top of Grand is a totalizer. It's the first thing you notice when you're coming up Grand Avenue. What kind of commitment can we get from DWP in terms of timeline for dismantling that?
Sorting out what the scope of the project is going to be. And one of the issues with the tank has been, and one of the big issues we have at the site, is that now we're going to no longer, let me put it this way, I guess. It's stormwater is one of the big concerns we have. And right now, as it is right now, all stormwater basically gets collected through the, all of the facility and goes out through our ocean discharge, which we're not going to have after December 2024 at the absolute latest. We're having to really re, and certainly, we understand some of the concerns that have been brought up regarding the tank. And I think we'd like to be able to try to see what we can do to work with, you know, people of El Segundo and see what the final disposition of that whole section of land is going to be. But right now, I can tell you the timeframe and that final.
The land and the tank potentially because 2024, when that last plant is sunsetted, do you think you might need that land for what purpose?
So the land right now is, actually has twofold. It's not just the, one use of the tank would be to deal with and manage wastewater during the construction project. Post-construction project, I'm not sure if it would be necessary to manage stormwater. The other area right now is being looked at for trying to the facility. So push towards our goal of really going to 100% renewable in the future and the criticality of complementing the renewable energy generation, storage, and batteries happen to be right now the sort of winning technology. So those are the kinds of things that will be more detailed out in the environmental impact report when it's available and provided. Right now, would need to be allocated for that.
Could we compromise on maybe painting the tank in the interim?
We can certainly consider it.
With the Centennial logo?
Yeah.
With anything. I mean, right now, it's just rust.
Yeah, we can certainly take into consideration and perhaps, you know, I think have follow-up discussion with city management as far as what would work, you know, to get through an interim.
That would be great.
Because it does not.
So if we put a Chevron logo?
Well, I vote for the Centennial logo.
Well, I have you, Ian. Can I ask another question?
Of course.
I've come to understand that the trees that were planted, a lot of water, they do require some water and irrigation on a frequent basis. And I think the way I understand the history is years back, DWP was asked to put in an irrigation line for the trees, if I have the facts straight, declined, but then agreed to water. About whether or not that's happening on a regular basis, can you comment on that?
Not sure about the current irrigation of the trees. Overall, we've been a bit delayed on dealing with irrigation at the facility post-construction. Right now, our contractor is working to go back, LA County Department of Public Health, to be able to get approval or concurrence to utilize the reclaimed water that we had used previously for irrigation. And it's been quite an iterative process to get them approved and that they're going to be trying to go back to the Department of Public Health this week with their final plans. You know, I guess, correct was not exactly a permit, as I understand, but more just like a concurrence, like a notice, along those lines.
So if that permit was issued, is the intention then to go back and install irrigation for those trees themselves? Or you're talking about the?
That I need to confirm.
Okay.
We can certainly follow. I'll just leave it at that. We just need to confirm that the trees would be addressed by that same. Is that all the rest of the landscape that has been affected within the plant facility, it's all related to the same thing? So I just need to confirm that the trees would be.
A hold because Los Angeles City Council has some concerns? Can you share with those concerns?
Yeah, I don't know that I can go into too much detail, but I think that there is a push to study 100% renewable power for us. And in light of the fact that we have these coastal power plants, you know, El Segundo, or rather Scattergood, I'm sorry, as well as one down in San Pedro and one down in Long Beach, that are affected by this. So it's something that, chaos, you know, overall master integrated resource plan, which we have gone through and vetted and has gone to all of the neighborhood councils. And now all of a sudden, we're really having to push to see what the future is going to be and to really have a good coastal plants. We're, you know, very certain of the need, especially Scattergood Generating Station, not just the plant that was just built, the units that were built, but the replacement of the other, you know, older units. But it's see the justification for that, to buy into that. So there's a lot of review and analysis on our overall transmission system. It's what's, it takes quite some time to be able to analyze and then demonstrate that generating units that are here in this part of the city affect how we move electricity around the entire system. And so that's all ongoing, but it's a.
Getting back to the tanks and the storage, are you using those tanks for your wastewater or storage or stormwater treatment at all? Or are you collecting water in them or?
Right, right now, we haven't collected water in the tank since we completed the static construction of units four, five, six, and seven at Scattergood. We were keeping the tank ready to be able to move into this next phase of construction, not expecting there to be quite as much of a potential delay. But there has not been active, say, a year or more.
Using it for construction purposes, for flushing lines and hydrotesting and things or?
We're using it for collecting wastewater, hydrostatic test water, and possibly de-watered groundwater.
And you're anticipating future construction is going to have that need also and you're going to use these tanks for that purpose or?
That's correct. One of the troubles that we have or issues we have at Scattergood Generating Station specifically is with respect to the test water or de-watered wastewater discharge for the plant, difficult to do that with any.
Without treatment?
Right, because you want to make sure that you have a clean sample of permit discharge. So the trouble is there's not a lot of land at Scattergood to be able to set up temporary tanks to accommodate the capacity necessary.
But there's a Hyperion next door that feeds water.
That's correct. And we're actually looking wastewater discharge through the plant. But it's, although it's right next door, where wastewater has to go to get to Hyperion is actually the opposite end of the facility, unfortunately. It's all the way at Imperial and Vista Del Mar. So we're trying to sort so much more straightforward than unfortunately it is.
And since we have you here, are you aware that Scattergood produces intermittent annoying noise for our residents who live on the west side of town?
Yes, you know, at times, it depends on the phase of operation of the units at times. And sometimes, you know, if there's a transient, you can have safety valves lift. It really just depends on the nature of the noise. State with the units that were installed to, you know, really make sure that we can address overall, you know, average noise level. There's not, if we have a trend on what the transients are, we can kind of isolate, extent possible, we do. If it, you know, if it's not, if there's no common denominator, unfortunately, that's something that's very difficult to try to prevent. But the things that we can try to do, you know, right now, we're looking at, for example, the units that were installed on the terrace, try to perhaps, look at cutting down some of the just normal running noise from those units. And we're really taking a lot of this into the analysis for the installation of the new units project noise, non-significant impact, in other words, keep it, I think, less than about a 5DPA at the fence line or the sensitive receptors. We're trying to respect that same one from the original project. And then we're now having the improvements we can make. So it's an ongoing effort. And unfortunately, you know, there's a little bit of a growing pain period with these things as we kind of get used to operating them and work out different, you know, bugs. Just kind of trying to do the best we can with that.
Is baffling a possibility?
I'm sorry?
Are baffles a possibility?
Yeah, in fact, actually, when they installed Unit Four, which is the large frame gas turbine, which has their gas turbine and HRS here, or heat recovery steam generator, as they call it, has a lot of acoustic baffling already on it. It was, I think, a pretty substantial improvement over other units. Else, I think, again, there's a lot of sound dampening and improvements that have been made. But I think there's still some potential for us to make some improvements there. And we're trying to work through those things and balance what's physically possible and then what won't jeopardize the, is a possibility. And like I said, we're trying to sort through that.
And the numbers that you had up there, are those good numbers for residents to call to report the noise?
Yeah, and I guess one thing to keep in mind, we have, you know, two different, we've certainly fielded any noise complaints, and we can sort those out on our end, and that's not a problem. So I'd say just that 1-800 number, 800-531-6640, is a fine number to use. However, you know, again, that part of it, for the time being, I would say that's sufficient. And we'll sort through those things. As far as what the nature of the noise is, at the end of the day, you know, whether it's a project or whether it's ongoing, to the best extent we can, so I'd say yes.
Any other questions?
When is the anticipated date for the release of the impact report?
You know, we are trying to sort through some internal things legally to make sure that it's fully, you know, been fully analyzed. And we are still waiting for these transmission studies to be done. In fact, we're probably not looking at the EIR being released until late summer, would be my guess. We're just about done with everything. It's just now making sure that it's acceptable, you know, ready for the outsides. At this point, probably mid to late summer is a realistic target.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Any more questions? Thank you for the presentation.
We definitely thank you for your time. And, you know, we understand to have all the projects on the very west side there. And so we appreciate you guys bearing with us. And certainly, you know, open communication is, I think, the best way to go as far as there are concerns that are brought up. Try to address those the best we can. Thanks again.
Department, the March 2017 Investment Portfolio Report. I see our City Treasurer, Krista Binder.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council members. Krista Binder, the City Treasurer. So I'd like to present the Investment Portfolio Report ending for the quarter of March of 2017. Typo. Portfolio as it stands at the end of that quarter. The short-term portfolio has an average weight of maturity of 45 days. This is the part of the portfolio we call the liquidity portfolio. This is the money that we hold short-term to meet the city's, which we call the core portfolio, average weighted maturity of 2.83 years. This is the money that we invest longer term to maximize earnings. As you can see, this shows our compliance and adherence to our investment percentages based on the different asset classes. And this is showing our compliance of credit quality. I know this was an ask from one of the council members who wanted to make sure that we were showing the actual, the securities are A-rated and above. And that's required as part of our investment policy as well. Just to speak, we have one Wells Fargo bond on there. It did mature recently on May 8th, so we no longer hold that. Our adherence to continuing education, and in fact, Dino and I recently participated in the California Municipal Treasurers Association Annual Conference. And I know I got 10.2 hours of continuing education, so I think Dino got the same. And this is a chart we like to show, which shows our diversification as far as our various asset classes. This includes all of the securities and investments we have in the portfolio in addition to, and this again, kind of demonstrates the difference between the two types of portfolios, the short-term or liquidity section, and then how we ladder out the longer portfolio. You'll see the maturity ranges in years from the one to five-year. It shows how the market is sort of changed over the previous quarter. The long end of the portfolio is, remained pretty constant, some fluctuations. But the short end of the portfolio is where we've seen some of the, in the one to two-year range, and you'll see this on the next slide. So you'll see like the two-year note as of June 30th, so year over year, has gone up significantly. If you look at the five-year, it's kind of matched that. But if you go back year, yield is not that much different, but the two-year yield has gone up significantly. So we try to look at those changes in the yield curve to take advantage of any opportunities we can in the different, between the different years and the different rate change. To Dino Marsochi, our Deputy Treasurer, too.
Thank you. Good evening. So looking at the cash flow here, we can see we're just coming off our month with REACTs. So you can see the influx of cash in January, February. March was a little bit lower this year, but April will make up for a lot of that. And then just looking at the changes from year to year, and see how October, November, December, being very positive in January, February. And as I said, March was a little bit lower, but April will be much higher. Activity-wise, we haven't had a lot of activity in the fees. And then we had one bond mature and another one called. And since then, we just had one bond mature, as Krista mentioned, the Wells Fargo. So as Krista had mentioned, the rates have been kind of, things mature and we've purchased new investments. The rate increase in our portfolio for purchases over maturities is not as high as it used to be. It's because the rates, you know, haven't changed as much in the last couple of years. Invested, you know, 5.6 million more than we've had mature. So we've been somewhat active. And then we're still looking, as Krista showed you, the latter, we'll be looking to make more investments coming up in the near. Economic indicators, you know, gross domestic product. There were estimates. There were estimates about two point one percent for the year. We're off to a slow start. The first quarter was only point seven percent the year. But you can see the projections, excuse me, the projections are a little bit lower, getting down to, you know, one point nine percent long-term. Unemployment, as you've probably all heard, is at, very, we've called it, you know, almost full employment. So that's been a positive for the economy. And then inflation is up much higher than it was a year ago. This was, you know, unemployment and inflation is up where they want it to be, maybe a little bit higher even. So they'll be looking at those two going forward, raising interest rates. And the projections for this year, they're, you know, June, a month ago, they were saying eighty percent chance of an increase in June. But Krista and I were talking, we haven't heard much from the brokers lately. They've been pretty quiet as to projections for a June increase, which is just coming up next month. And that concludes our presentation. If anyone has questions?
Questions?
Your slide on current activities, the first bullet, you talk about two CDs, four hundred, the CDs is four ninety.
The total of the two CDs is four ninety and we invest, when we buy CDs, we buy in two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increments because they're under the threshold of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC insurance, so.
Got it.
Thank you. It's always so informative. We appreciate you coming to educate us. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Prustak?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Councilmember Dugan?
Now is the time for public communications related to city business. Five minutes per person, thirty minutes total. Seeing no public communications, we will close. Procedural motion only.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Bye. Posed, five zero. Thank you. Special orders of business, public hearing. This is the time and place here to fix for a public hearing. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of a number one assessment, number EA eleven eighty-four and specific plan amendment, number SPA seventeen dash zero-one to amend the downtown specific plan as follows. One, remove the requirement that upper floor residential occupants must also be commercial tenants or own residential units. And three, miscellaneous cleanup. Applicant, Ruane, fiscal impact, none. City Clerk, was proper notice of a hearing given on a timely matter?
Yes, it was.
And has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
None has been received.
Mr. Lee, make the presentation.
Madam Mayor and members of the council.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself as well.
So your Councilmember Prustak is recusing herself, as has our city manager, so.
Yes.
All based upon the location of their residence.
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is an item to request to make a change in our downtown district. Specifically, it addresses an item related to housing units in downtown. The city's current requirement allows residential units in downtown only if they are live-work units. Although this was well-intended back in two thousand, it has caused some hardship to remove this specific requirement. And Greg McLean, our planning manager, is here to give a brief explanation and a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Sam. So this downtown specific plan was to uncouple the residential units from the commercial units. So a little bit of background for the public, currently residential, new residential units are only allowed if they're occupied by someone who is either owning or managing the business below floors. So they're coupled right now and it's becoming a bit of a hardship for property owners. So I'll get into that a little bit, but before we launch into this study, staff had a few recommendations. One was to keep the requirement that residential was only allowed on the floor. One was to not change the residential density of the downtown area. And the third was to come up with a residential parking standard. So a little bit of history, before two thousand, downtown was zoned CRA and upper-level residential units were permitted. And as a matter of fact, there are approximately eighty residential units currently in the downtown area. And I'll show you a map in a little bit. Yeah, about eighty. In the year two thousand, the document, residential units were prohibited outright. So the eighty became non-conforming. And very quickly, within a year, the city council initiated a return of residential to the downtown area, but gave explicit direction to coupled with the commercial units. The planning commission, just as a brief aside, recommended not coupling them and the city council overruled that in two thousand and one, and that's how it stands now. So here's the map of the downtown area. From left to right is Main Street. Richmond is above that. And all the red dots and the blue dots represent the existing residential units in the downtown. There's a little bit less than eighty of them. The blue dots are the ones that were built after two thousand and one. Highlight them, but there's a cluster of them over here on Richmond Street. There's one here on Main Street across from the city hall. And there's one other on Main Street at the back down the block. Residential units scattered throughout the downtown area, and this is just a quick sampling of some that we found in just one afternoon. So the important thing, though, is that since two thousand and one, only six residential units have been built. Built. Again, in two thousand and three, one-two-one through two, one-two-seven Richmond, four units. That is the applicant's property. And in two thousand and four, at four twenty-sixth Main at the back of this thing here. Here are some of the problems that we see with the current requirements. One is it's difficult for landlords to lease or to sell existing live-work units. As far as businesses are concerned, starting a new business is hard as well. It makes the barrier of entry very high. And it sort of begs the question, what happens if the business fails? Then you have to move. So it's been, it's been a sort of a big hurdle for getting new startup businesses in downtown. New ones, we've built six in the last seventeen years and that's pretty much, excuse me, last sixteen years, and that's pretty much all we're gonna get. The last one, I said, was built in two thousand and four. And the demand for downtown residential units remains high, believe it to be true. So benefits of allowing uncoupled residential units would be. Yeah, the last two, there's no apparent market demand for live-work units. There's nobody. And the last one is that there is demand for people who want to live in the downtown area. Except that if they don't have a business that they can bring with them or start a business, then they have to find one of those eighty existing, only eighty of them. So the, the supply is low, the demand is high. That's essentially what I was trying to say. So benefits of allowing uncoupled residential in the downtown area is that it's better for downtown businesses because you're adding custom in the downtown area, the more eyes on the street, the more, the more people that are on the streets, generally the safer people feel being on the streets. There's nothing scarier than being the only one on the street, especially at night. Reduced auto dependency, clearly, if the people who lives in restaurants nearby, they don't need to drive as often anyway. And it could stimulate some new commercial developments. But at one point I did want to make was that when the specific plan was adopted, the density was calculated out to be about two hundred and seventy, was under the existing rules now. So if everybody took advantage of building a residential unit where they could, we would have two hundred and seventy units. And right now, we have about seventy, so there's still capacity for about two hundred, and that's about it. And as I said, one of our goals was not to change the density in downtown. So going to the issue of parking, the planning commission made a recommendation that, well, let me give a little history. At the moment, behind that was the people who live there are working there because they're linked and they don't need to move their car. So the planning commission recommended, though, one half of a unit, excuse me, one half of a parking space per each new unit. The idea was they thought one would be a little bit needing to drive as much, so half seemed to make sense to them. Keep in mind, though, that if you had only one unit on the property, that point five gets rounded up to one, so one would be the minimum. And so for a purpose once to enter into an agreement to buy parking through the in-lit parking program, they would be rounded up. So if you have point five requirement, every calculation's gonna end in zero or point five, so if it's point five, it rounds up to the next whole number. The summary, we're recommending that the residential be uncoupled from the commercial, that we preserve the prohibition on first-floor residential, no change in residential density from what it is currently, and that parking is our presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Greg.
Yeah. What's the definition of a unit?
Definition of a unit? We're talking about a residential unit, of course.
If I have a, imagine the most you could fit is probably three bedrooms on the second floor above a merchant's place. Is it a three-bedroom unit that counts as three units or is that one unit?
If it has one kitchen and one entry.
One unit, only be required to have one car, three roommates.
That's currently how it is. The specific plan is silent on the size of the units.
Was the planning commission recommendation unanimous?
So it was a three to zero vote.
Because they were downtown property owners, residents?
Yes, actually, to be specific, there were three of them that were, that were needing to recuse themselves, and then we wouldn't, from a half, one was selected to remain.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead, are you done? I'm sorry, John. I just questioned the, you know, I'm in agreement with everything except I don't understand the parking spaces. That's the one that concerns me. I think if, somewhere you had owner, tenant, I could see the connection there, that wasn't provide, the need to provide any additional parking. Now that we're gonna separate that, any unit that you put up there would seem logical if that's gonna bring a vehicle in there and any release of this is going to, every unit is gonna bring the minimum of one vehicle into the downtown area here, which I would think that we ought to, you know, it just seems logical that they ought to offset that with a parking space on a one-to-one basis. I don't know how you got to a point five.
Properties would only be permitted to have a single unit because of their size, and those would be required to have one parking space when we round up. So it really only becomes a factor when you get into the higher numbers, so the larger properties. And then the idea there was they have commercial on the, required up when a certain portion of the people living there would go off to work.
You ever been to a baseball game at Wrigley Field? You know, that doesn't work. So I just, you know, again, the way that the math works out, I would think that any unit is gonna bring an additional, is going right now. I'm not sure how that figures out, but everything else I have no issue with, so.
I agree with the first three, but the last one I don't agree with at all. In fact, I think like any other residential unit in town, it should, those should have two parking spaces. And then going somewhere else and then the business would be there. But more and more people are working from home, so people aren't leaving their home during the day. So that keeps those cars there. And as I think most of my colleagues said, we already have parking issues. So I'm not in favor of that one at all. In fact, I would like it to be a two-parking space requirement, like regular residential.
And the residential units that are above businesses, is that correct?
Not exactly. They're required to have space according to their square footage and the use. So if a new, if a new office was built for every, was it three hundred square feet or two hundred and fifty square feet, they have to provide a parking space. So it goes much, it's a factor of their square footage. And almost no business would end up with only one parking space.
Restaurants are exempt from that, correct?
Restaurant, no, new restaurants are not. Conversion, conversion of an old space is a different situation if there's a parking space. So you can imagine that gets large very fast.
And so, Mayor, you're suggesting those standards plus two more, rather than plus essentially one more.
I think we're making it overly onerous for the property owners. I think if we're thinking about the future, car ownership is going down and we're still sticking to these archaic parking violations. We have parking challenges downtown, I think. I see cars frankly parked, like a Maserati, for example, all day long on Main Street. So I don't, I don't think that is the issue that we need to deal with. I think we want to give the property owners the rights to do what they want. I don't, I don't think one additional car, that's my personal opinion. I would go with the planning commission's recommendation.
Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Oh. Thank you. Okay. So the public hearing is now open. Oh, wait. So we have the presentation. So Mr. Ruane, he can go first? And I don't see Mr. Ruane here.
He was walking around out in the hall.
I haven't seen him.
I saw him again out there, so.
Anybody would like to speak now? So public comment is closed. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, four zero. So now we'll have our council discussion. So how many parking spaces do we have downtown? Does anybody remember from our parking study the summer before last? And I think with housing, the demand for housing rising every day, we hear about with all the businesses coming into Silicon Beach and El Segundo and the demand for residential not having enough, I think eventually.
Yeah, I think if I'm a property owner, if I don't have adequate parking, the value of my property diminishes. And that's the property owner's problem. It shouldn't be the city's, in my, in my opinion, their problem to solve. I think we're looking to the future and we hang on to these ordinances in downtown and Smoky Hollow and elsewhere that will be archaic at some point.
I don't, I don't residence in a vehicle here yet, so, you know. I see the math, you know, you're saying, you're calling it a roundoff that it's one, but there ought to be an offset because you look at the downtown, you look at Main Street, where, where are those vehicles physically gonna park? Behind alley that are currently operating businesses there. Now you're gonna put non-coupled tenants in there with it, there's not enough space to go around and it's gonna be difficult to have enough parking downtown. So when you, when you gotta come down, get your teeth taken care of, and you know, the only other place to park is out in the, in the public streets and you got the two-hour parking on Main Street there, so that's gonna clear Main Street out as an option. They're gonna be coupled in as close as they can get on the backside of that. So I think there is gonna be a problem. I'm getting more comfortable with the point five per unit because it's rounding up, but you know, I don't know why you wouldn't just say one per unit. I don't think we need to go to two per unit, but that's.
Well, as Mayor Protam pointed out, those units can have three bedrooms. And what hap- That was the canyonization of Main Street, but if those units get approved and built, then there's an even higher demand for parking.
A question about the parking structure on Grand and what, between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve, that was mostly vacant, was not getting used much. Sometime subsequent to that, go in there, you have to go to the third floor to find a place, it's definitely getting used. How is it helping?
We're finding that it's not getting used quite like we expected. One of our planners went out there on Cinco de Mayo evening and went up to the top deck and there was one car up there and then went to the lower deck. And there were only five or six cars. One whole block had almost no cars on it. So that was on Cinco de Mayo evening, so we were expecting to see a bit more than that.
Everybody was in an Uber, come on.
Well, that's-
That's kind of the point.
You know, that's that.
Exactly.
Same thing Dr. Brand says, where I have to go up to the top often and there's nothing on Richmond, which we love because those are people spending money in town.
During the day, it's, it's way better than, it pleases me, it's getting used and that creates more spaces on the street.
Have we asked the merchants their opinion on this matter? I know we have one on the planning commission's, what they would say. Do we want more residents above our shops with the trade-off of parking or not? I mean, because I am concerned that the more restricted we make the parking covenants, the less projects will get approved. And we already know we've got housing shortages. I'd be interested to see what they think about that.
And the accessory dwelling unit coming before us adds to my concerns because that doesn't require parking for any unit within, half a mile is within half a mile of transportation. doesn't require parking for any unit within, half a mile is within half a mile of transportation. So we're going to be bringing more people to town, which is a good thing, but less parking.
I think if parking is painful enough, people in public parking structures, and they broadcast their occupancy on every structure when you drive by, I still take an Uber every time, because I do not want to deal with trying to find a parking spot. We don't want to create that, but I think people that are coming to Main Street, out to dinner, they're going to have some drinks, not driving. And frankly, I can't remember the last time I couldn't find a parking spot on Main Street.
Oh, I have had.
Just today at lunch hour, I parked on Main. Think there's.
Thursdays from one o'clock till five o'clock.
Well, okay. Good point.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm a numbers guy, Drew.
Anybody watching Farmer's Market?
Sorry.
Well, it's a public hearing, so what do we do? We're just going to.
No, well, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, so we're just going to receive it and.
So I. Am.
Okay, so we're going to have the city attorney read the ordinance?
Okay.
And then should we vote on each of them separately, or the?
Whatever, whatever he wants.
Right, there's three items, so.
Yes, Mayor, an ordinance adopting a denim to, number one, to an approved mitigated negative declaration, environmental assessment, number four, seven, four, and amending the downtown specific plan regarding residential uses. Ready for introduction?
Doctor. Prepared to waive the first reading and schedule the second reading.
And you're going to introduce it as presented to us?
Yes.
A .5 parking spaces?
Yes.
Unit? Built for June 6, 2017. Thank you, thank you, Sam, thank you, Greg. We can bring back Greg Carpenter and Carol Perstek. Oh, here comes our city manager, and here comes our council. Thank you. Okay, so our next item consented.
I have one, number five, please.
Do I have a motion to approve item two, three, four, six, and seven?
So moved.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five, zero.
Action authorizing the fire department to purchase a new 2017 Chevy Suburban all-wheel-drive command vehicle, fiscal impact $77,634.33. And I know that there's quite some life on the, or it's been in service for a long time, about how we review all equipment as part of the strategic planning and budgeting process, because I just feel like several occasions, not just your department, but things come up, and it just seems to me that it could, could be an easier way for both strategic planning and budgeting session, agreed on which equipment inventory we're going to approve, that it's not even a discussion throughout the year. So I just, this is more of a process thing, it just feels a little odd to me that we're continuing to have these discussions every meeting or so, or every so often, so.
Budget for equipment replacement, we look at all of our capital rolling stock, we go through a depreciation process where we do a time of service for frontline apparatus and then reserve apparatus. So let's take a fire engine, for example. We anticipate a 10-year reserve status, so it's a 20-year replacement. We know the current costs, we anticipate future costs through amateurization or a CPI process. We put money away each year through the budget process in our equipment replacement. We put that budget for council consideration, it's approved through the budgetary process. And then as the years come up for replacement, we then come back to the city council for consideration for purchases that hit the threshold that we need, council. To our equipment replacement fund for the suburban, we have appropriate funds in place. This does give some latitude that in years that are a little lean, we can postpone equipment replacement and perhaps save some money, gives us latitude to appropriately replace our apparatus and equipment as needed based on industry standards and the like. And so in a roundabout way, we do go through the council process and get approval for the equipment replacement, although we don't for, you know, we would want to anticipate next year purchasing another pumper or ladder truck. This has been historically the way that the fire department has gone about its purchasing process.
You know, and I had, I was just thinking, I know there were years also where we didn't fund the equipment replacement fund.
Or we borrowed from it.
Borrowed from it, yeah. So just, I don't know how other council members feel, but if, as part of the budgeting process, we looked at all of them, we said, let's prioritize those, how much do we anticipate as having available, and look at it a little bit more holistically versus, you know, one at a time kind of thing, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Are you recommending a strategic planning where we'll see things like engines and tankers and ambulances come forward that you would like to see?
Yeah, it would just be nice to have a prior, just like you, most of the, for the year, also, equipment that needs to be replaced, that's become an obsolete, prioritized. I know that this, the suburban you're driving now has ridiculous mileage on it, so I understand the request, it's just, it was really to address the process, because we're going into.
Yeah, so it's already planned in the budget, just already set up.
Then easier for the department, so they don't have to come back to us and make that request, the city council, it's already done, we've addressed it once, and assuming we're on target for the budget, it's just, happens.
I had a similar discussion with the equipment replacement fund. We don't have the same diligence taking money out of it, and that's just, it's a process of planning, and I like what Drew says about if it's presented as part of the annual plan, the strategic plan, then we're approving that, then we're done, we need to hear about it again. So I like that, they're going in, and then what monies are coming out, and if, and if something has to be addressed as an emergency, we can address it as an emergency. I understand that's going to happen too, but, and that being said also, there's nothing wrong with stretching a life on something, that's money that can go somewhere else in the city too, so.
Certain thresholds of cost?
Currently, you need to approve anything that's more than $25,000. I think what council may be suggesting is if we do a annual review of the equipment, that there can be some preapproval of staff, and then back with a specific staff report.
Yeah, that way you have, you have a plan for your manpower, your equipment, and the funding for it is all set aside, and then you just have to go execute then, that's it.
So as part of our preparation for strategic planning in July, staff has been asked, the departments have been, well, since we've gone through it, we'll go through it again, make sure that there are things that are on there that really are going to be replaced. Take a look at the lifespan, which is basically the amortization schedule, and we'll come up with a list this year of things that we intend to replace, time to time, due to accidents or failures, but for the most part, the department heads should know what they intend to replace as far as major purchases.
I'm afraid anybody watching this, this vehicle being replaced is 14 years old. Thank you, Chief.
To approve item five, consideration and possible action authorizing the fire department to purchase a new 2017 Chevy Suburban all-wheel-drive command vehicle, fiscal impact $77,634.33.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I keep mine a long time too. You business, number eight, consideration and possible action to oppose Senate Bill 649, Hueso wireless telecommunication facilities and proposed amendments to install small.
Mayor, members of council, the League of California Cities has asked for member cities to oppose this bill for various reasons. Our public works director and our city attorney worked together on this item, I'm going to turn it over to Ken Berkman, our public works director, to explain.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor, council, briefly, as Greg mentioned, the League of California Cities brought this to our attention as an action alert email to oppose this bill that would allow small cell installations by right. Oppose the bill, and we are in concurrence for there are several reasons, including the facts that this would essentially allow, small cells to be allowed in all zones, including residential, by right. It would cap amount to lease space on its own infrastructure, on our own buildings, and also, of course, within the public right of way. The, it would provide a de facto exemption to SEQA and preclude consideration by the public or other environmental impacts that these facilities could impose. And while we certainly believe our city, we're progressive, technologically advanced, we want to provide opportunities for residents and businesses to get the best. This proposed bill seems to shift local land use authority completely away from us, and puts it into the hands of the private interests without really any regard for public input. So with that marking.
Says what a municipality can charge, it doesn't leave it up to the municipality.
Right, it becomes a cost-based, cost-return-based theory.
So we don't get to say what we charge for 41 city business where they don't belong? Maybe once they solve all the state's problems, they can look at ours? Any questions for Ken or Mark? We have a motion to oppose the bill?
Don't move.
Five, zero, thank you, Ken. Number nine, consideration and possible action regarding fiscal year 2016, 17 mid-year financial review, fiscal impact increase of $769,300 to the general fund expenditures, and a decrease of 220, for a net reduction of $998,245 to the general fund and designated reserve balance, an increase of $847,830 to other funds expenditures, and an increase of $1,062,790.
Mayor, members of council, Joe Lilio, our director of finance, is going to make this presentation, he's going to cover how we, how we closed last fiscal year, or where we stand halfway through this current year. And then finally, there are a number of requests that staff is going to be transfers between funds, and for access to some additional funds for some priority projects that we need to move forward with this year. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Lilio.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. We'll do a high-level overview of 15, 16 year-end results, detailed review of 16, 17 mid-year general fund, enterprise and special revenue funds, a mid-year update, and then a mid-year appropriation requests, to approve certain ones or disapprove certain ones and have discussion. So for 15, 16, the ended September 30, 2016, we did 6 million, they came in at 65.3 million. Expenditures were anticipated at 63.6, they came in about a million dollars less at 62.6 million. However, 700,000 of that was carried over. So the ending result was ending fund balance, what we had projected of 14.1 million dollars, that was in the budget, to 16.4 million is where we are at right now. I'd like to put in every budget presentation of all of our revenue sources for the general fund. Four major ones are the sales and use tax at 17%, I'm sorry, 18%, business license tax at 17%, TOT at 14. This is our expenditure budget by department, total budget adopted for this year was 69.8 million. Police NIS make up 32%, fire 22, and public works 10%. Those are three largest departments in the budget. 31st, revenues are on target in the second quarter, and I'll go over that in a minute. The adopted budget of 67.8 million is right on target, so there are no estimated changes to that number. However, there are variations. Here's the adopted budget of 69.8 million. Expenses are tracking below budget due to vacancies. Right now, there's a potential for $1 million in salary and benefit savings. The first column prior year actual through March 31st, 2016, it's last year's mid-year results. Next column over is the current year through mid-year. You'll see last year we were at 33.7 million, this year at 38. This is our 1.3 million more in sales tax, primarily due to the state's triple flip program came to an end, and a 3% increase in sales tax activity. $2 million more in TOT due to measures in the TRA payment. So those are your main differences between last year and this year. Comparing the current year's revenues to budget, the city has received about 50%, 57% of the budgeted revenues through March 31st. Change in the total budget, but again, I will go over some of the variations within some of the revenue line items. So sales tax, we budgeted 12.2 million, we're anticipating 12.5 million, difference of 320,000, and that's due to a part that would transfer funds from the LA County pool to the city's account, and that was initiated by our sales tax consultant, HTO. Next one is the franchise tax, we budgeted 3.2 million, a $300,000 decrease, or 9.4% decrease. And the driving factor, there is the Southern California Edison payment. So we get two large payments, one from medicine, one from gas company every April, and that is due to overall electricity demands being decreased, as well as reduction, and total SCE gross sales. The user, utility user tax, UUT tax, we had budgeted 6.2 million, it's being revised downward by 410,000, or 6.6%. And the driving factors there are just a few of them. Some of the largest ones are conservancy efforts in electricity and water, as well as electric use requirements for energy efficiencies. Another factor in the reduced electric utility is the conversion of city industrial space into office spaces, which significantly reduce the use of electricity due to the nature of this business model. So this has a direct impact on the electric UUT. The next item is the tax resolution agreement, TRA payment. We had budgeted six and a quarter million, and that's coming in at almost 6.6 million. Really is due to lower UUT taxes paid by Chevron in the gas and code gen UUT. Other revenues are anticipated to increase by about 39,000, so the net effect is $11,000. This next slide is the general fund expenditures. So we have last year's mid-year expenditures totaling 28.3 million, current years totaling $30 million. We have a little bit higher staffing levels, there were some MOU agreements that were settled. So those are the main driving factors there between last year and this year. As far as how we're doing compared to budget, so we spent right on target, probably a little bit under the budget, and again, I had mentioned, we probably will see salary and benefit savings of around $1 million. 14.1 million dollars in reserves, and we're revising that to 16.4 million, which was a slide I went over previously. Revenues, we're keeping at 67.8. Expenditures, if we don't factor in, and do a factor in, the continued appropriations of 700,000, we have an ending unassigned fund balance of 13.7 million dollars. Once we reach our 18% expenditures reserves, that's 12. Adopted a budget at $40,000 after reserves, reverse requirements were met, now we're saying it's going to be 1.5 million dollars.
The non-department was the only one that was trending above the where you're at year-to-date? Is that like contractors and consultants, or something else?
No, so that has to do with any payouts of individuals leaving retirements.
Thank you.
So they can have that as well. Water fund is on track with revenues and slightly lower than expenditures, and that's due to a vacant, a couple vacancies in the water fund. So we're anticipating 1,000 under budget. Sewer fund is slightly up in revenues and on track to meet expenditures. And you'll see a large variance there in expenditures compared to the prior year, and that's because there's some large capital projects at the public. Golf course fund is currently at 36% of budgeted revenues. So last year at this time, they were at about 31%, so a little bit better than last year. Expenditures are at 44%, and you know, keep in mind that revenue golf course typically increases, staff will continue to monitor this fund. Special revenue funds such as federal, state, county programs, traffic safety, state gas tax, Measure R, Prop A and C, these funds are all anticipated to be right on the budget. Debt service fund, this is the fund that records the city's facility lease, activity for Douglas street gap closure. Payments on this lease obligation are due every. Payments on this lease obligation are due every February 1st and August 1st of each year, and we're on target to reach. I'll touch on the appropriation requests that staff is recommending. So I'll go over each one. There's 13 of them, general fund, and two in other funds besides the general fund. But if you have also your Exhibit A, it's outlined there as well. To go over the first one, staff is recommending a half-million-dollar transfer out to the Ek 5 million. With this half-million-dollar transfer, that will bring the fund balance up to $2 million, which will fulfill City Council's policy of having a reserve of $2 million in that Economic Uncertainty Fund. The next item, 200,000 transfer out to Cap. Working with, with Public Works, they have identified a need for additional 200,000. So 400,000 was approved in the current year's budget, and Public Works is requesting an additional 200,000 to address some of the issues that have. Next item, 125,000 as an additional appropriation to the LAX Master Plan intervention for legal fees incurred. To date, the city has incurred 107,000. The budget is 75,000, so 1,000 would cover that. 118,000 as an additional appropriation to the non-departmental Department for PARs costs during 15-16. The PARs payment was not budgeted in the city to make the missed payment from the prior And if, if City Council was not inclined to do that, there is no penalty requirement make that, but then the future year payments will increase. Replacement of the class system, so the new POS cash sharing system. This is not to make a specific purchase for a specific product, but just a placeholder there. We've done many demos on this item, and we feel 51,000 is sufficient for full implementation training and all the costs and fees associated with implementing that. $50,000 as additional program that's offered as a benefit to all labor groups and is defined in each MOU. So this appropriation will create a budget for this employee benefit, and there is no budget current. $1,000 as an additional appropriation to the Public Works repair and maintenance supply budget for a government buildings division. So their costs are trending much higher this year due to the aging infrastructure of some of our buildings. Public Works has spent about 75. Ken feels the 37,000 will get them through the end of this fiscal year. $25,000 as a reduction to the Public Safety Augmentation Fund revenue budget. So this $25,000 would have been budgeted in Fund 123, which is the P-SAF fund. The expenditures were budgeted there, it's just revenues were not. And this is a cleanup from prior years due to auditor's recommendation that we move the P-SAF funds into its. $1,467 increase to the revenue budget for the computer refresh charges. This is just an accounting correction that needs to be made. Unified Participating Agency, the COOPA funds. So again, here, based on auditor's prior comments and the COOPA program itself, they're recommending that we do set up its own fund for this activity of 242,709 and the expenditure budget of 311,997 out of the general fund into the COOPA Fund, Fund 126. And the final item for the general fund is 120. And this request was done by Chief Donovan for seismic retrofit for the fire department for 90,000 and Fire Station 1 facility upgrades at 30,000. And this is to be offset by a reduction in the general fund expenditures, and so the Fire does have salary savings after reducing, so there is no impact to the general fund due to the fact that salary savings will be used. And the two remaining items that are not in the general fund. First, expenditure appropriation to the General Liability Insurance Fund, Fund 602. In December, ICRMA, who's our insurance pool, which we are a member of, informed the city and all of its members that there's going to be reassessors in the general liability insurance pool. That total liability is underfunded by 38.2 million, so the city shares about 1.7 million of that. And again, it's over a 10-year payment plan for 170,000 a year. $45,500 as an additional expenditure appropriation. Fund the remaining 0.5 FT of an accountant that was approved during the 16-17 budget. So if you recall, I'm just going to go to this slide real quick. During the 16-17, accounting manager and shifting those funds to create a new accountant position, there was enough funds there to do 1.5 accountants. I was anticipating to get the other 0.5 funding through the RSI program. Both LALA and FA, obviously, the RSI program has been frozen, so those discussions are no longer fruitful. They will, they will not fund that position anymore. So I'm proposing to fund this position. So we already have 60 percent of it funded in the general. 22,750 from the water fund, 11,375 from the sewer fund, 11,375 from the gas tax fund, and the gas tax with SB 1 that passed. The governor signed frequent reporting of the gas tax, quarterly reporting, and some other regulatory reporting. So that position will be supported, the accountant position will be supporting those requirements. And the water and sewer funds, they're, right now, it's not getting done. Also helping out with the Prop 218 process that's going to begin next year, the accountant would be integral role in that, in that process. So that's, that addresses all the appropriation requests.
We had talked about putting money aside to have a IT project manager to manage the implementation of the, of the replacement of the class system. I know that was a priority of the IT Technology Committee.
Yeah, there's, there's salary savings with an IS. I'm, that can address it. Right now, we have about 75,000 to 80,000 in salary savings with an IS that can be utilized for that.
Okay. And then was there additional, that's 51,000? I know that there was some additional IT initiatives that we wanted to move concurrently with, and I wasn't sure, I don't think 51,000 was going to cover all that.
So we do still have some IT money in.
How much do we still have in there?
You know, I don't recall off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
And I would just add, these, this, this list is of things that we didn't plan for last September. So the items that are budgeted or that we do have equipment replacement funds, we set the budget up in, in last September.
Joe, I have one question. When you were talking about the gas tax reporting, is that a natural gas or is that automobile gas 12 percent?
Correct.
Do that? Do we get any portion of the 12 percent increase in gas tax to perform that?
Yes, we are getting a significant increase to the city.
So we can use it for that. Thank you.
Correct.
And then I did have one other thing on the golfing. I just want to make sure we're putting in a plan to, if, in anticipation of closing the golf course in September, that we put a plan into place so that we're not spending money that is not necessary to spend.
Yes, so that, that will.
But that we're not putting, we're not, we're only doing may, emergency fixes and not putting money into the golf course that, that we're going to be, I mean, potentially closing September 1.
That will be addressed during the upcoming budget discussion, so yeah, we have.
I just want to make sure.
I got one question, Joe. The COOPA fund that you're, you're making that transfer out of the general fund into the COOPA fund?
Yes.
You touched on how much, what the net result is to the general fund, but what's left in the COOPA?
Make that transfer.
I'm just curious, like, what kind of funds they have to work with?
The fund balance will be almost identical to the expenditure budget. It'll be about 300 and, just under 315,000.
Okay, so the new, the COOPA position, Steve?
Yes, I believe he, he will.
Okay.
Fire Chief is nodding in affirmation.
And Councilman Perschek, I will get back to you on what's. So if staff requests, column on the far right depicts where the fund balance will go, so without approval of any of those items, again, there'll be about 1.5 million sitting in, that's after we meet all of our reserve requirements, sitting in undesignated general. That will reduce the fund, the undesignated general fund reserves by 998,000, leaving about 550,000 sitting in undesignated general fund reserves. Presentation at the department level, the city is spinning according to the plan with the potential to achieve 1 million in salary and benefit savings. Revenues are well on line with the budget. Departments have been closely monitoring expenditure and revenue since February. Monthly revenue and expenditure reports of all their departments and divisions. The recapped original adopted budget for 16-17 had an undesignated fund balance reserve of 40,000. Council does approve staff requests. This is achieved while maintaining designated 18 percent reserve in general fund and fully funding the Economic Uncertainty Fund at $2 million as directed by council policy. And that concludes.
Any additional questions for Joe?
Yes, Dr. Brown?
Page 20, number two, $200,000 transfer out for the PD roof. Are you using for that roof which already was substantial?
Correct. So there's 400,000 currently budgeted for the PD roof. So this would bring the total budget for the PD roof to 600,000.
It seems like an expensive roof. Quotes or bids in that neighborhood?
I heard they came in.
So we, we missed that by a mile. We have to add $200,000 to it. Missed it by a mile.
With the budget of 400,000, we went out to bids for the roof, and they came at $533,000. So what we're, Public Works is looking to do now is capitalize on the Fire Station 1 roof project and get that, care same type of roof. We are cognizant of the fact that, as Murphy's Law will do to us, we didn't get the chance to do the roof, so we had the wettest, one of the wettest rainy seasons in our history, so that in all likelihood has caused problems in here, we will find. So we wanted to have a proper contingency. We had a, a special consultant come out and look with us to make sure we're covered, so we feel that $600,000 is the right number total for us to move forward properly.
So the costs went up, resulted in more damage.
That's true.
Is that right? Okay. Thank you. And then same page, item one, your explanation there is not the same one that was in page 10 in our packet, which talks about increasing our flexibility to address the pension and operating costs. Is, is there some?
That would be one of the benefits of also fully funding the Economic Uncertainty Reserve is to have that flexibility based on what discussions come out of the Ad-Hoc Committee that has been formed.
On that basis, I, I can support this, but sooner rather than later. Thank you.
So if there's no more questions, we have two items to approve. The one is receive and file, so that, but I do approve a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, Strategic Work Plan Quarterly Update and the Key Performance Indicators for the month of April 2017. Fiscal impact none, City Manager.
We'll have Joe Lilio begin this presentation. I did ask Ken Berkman as part of the quarterly capital profile. Joe will start it. We'll have Ken speak to the capital. As you recall, we, we did decide to do certain KPIs, or most of our KPIs, on a monthly basis. There are certain of those that we were going to report on quarterly, so you're going to hear both of those. We also, so this is your first report on the work, work program progress.
Okay, so this item, again, like Greg mentioned first, and you have in your packet is Attachment A, or Exhibit A, and then the key performance indicators. So briefly, Exhibit A does have a green, yellow, and red column. The green is we're currently in compliance with the stated activity. So in other words, it's either been implemented or it is on target to be implemented for 16-17 as addressed in the work plan, but it will be implemented in more than likely 17-18. Red indicates, and there are no red activities, but red would indicate that city staff is not able to currently attain this goal, and discussions would have to be. So where I broke this down is I'm going to go over all the green items first. So under Goal One, we do have a whole host of items that, you know, are on target. They either have, one is finalize, and it's, it's done chronologically on Exhibit A, if you want to follow along. Finalize design for the one-stop shop. So Sam has indicated that this will be finalized year, and so that will be addressed during strategic planning that's coming up. Research options for providing online business transactions to residents and business community. The research has been done by multiple departments, but particularly finance and planning, multiple demonstrations, and also that's been shared with the tech committee. Development of curriculum for a city, Citizens Training Academy that's on target to be developed by year-end. Library install encore enhancement and expand implemented by the summer. Parks and Recs for expanding to summer day camps and year-round recreation classes, and that's a target to be done by the summer. So three additional weeks of Tiny Talk Camp has been added called Teen Camp and expanded times for Camp Kalabanga. Continuing under Goal One, implement Centennial Festivities, so that's implemented, it's been going, we've held, merchandise has been sold. Enhanced media services for Sentinel Activities, that's, has been implemented as well. Report of the citywide KPIs. We started that in February, Action Survey, so development is underway. It is in the initial phases. Refine the budget and strategic planning process to incorporate community voices. That will be incorporated into the 17-18 strategic.
Heard to me today with some committee chairs at my table at the State of the City, I think we're remiss at not having the committee chairs as part of our strategic planning session. But love it, if they can be involved in the two half-day sessions, great. If they can't, I think every group should bring forth their ideas, so just, that triggered my thought. Thank you.
Develop, development of a social media policy done by year-end. Notification, I'm sorry, notify public of surveys and meetings via social media. So there is a change in your handout in Exhibit A that is yellow, that is incorrect, it should be green. The city has been, this spring, launched bi-monthly newsletter to disseminate service updates, milestones achieved, pending goals, so that was launched in March of 2017. Under Goal Two, been ongoing by Fire and PD. Plan to restructure PD, and that's referring to patrol assignments were restructured, that was already done. Analysis of Equipment Replacement Fund and update of depreciation, so that is in progress. Department heads with fine-tooth comb, and will be presented to council during strategic planning as well. Add the Emergency Services Coordinator, that position has been added, and recruitment is under progress. Institute proactive plans to mitigate, expand disaster personnel via citywide cross-training, that's been underway. Update code to address seismic standards, that is in progress. Enhance, utilized by PD. Under Goal Three, prioritize. Under goal three, prioritize vacancies so staff can focus efforts on most critical positions. So HR, the city manager and department heads did meet to address this and that plan has been- Hire staff dedicated to recruit and recruitment and selection. HR has added at least two interns to address this item. Under goal four, identify, presenting right after me on this list of projects and updating you on that. The aquatic center construction is underway. Top Gulf, there's an EIR that is anticipated to be-
Coming to city council.
Oh, coming to city, I'm sorry, coming to city council in July. Campus El Segundo turf replacement construction is anticipated to begin in August. Maintenance of trees, that's been ongoing, that's been increased by 2017. So city no longer issues pay stubs. Employees can all access to that electronically. Replace class reservation and POS system, so the researching of that, we've seen multiple demonstrations and has presented to the tech committee on this. Fiber optic network project, that's to be completed prior to September 2017. Under goal five, abhorred by recreational parks. You'll see under economic development, there's various activities that are green there. Strategic planning and budget study sessions, again, that's already been implemented. Develop and issue RFP for citywide fee study, that was presented, city council on the prior council meeting, so that's been issued. Conduct study on business license structure, that is underway as well, staff is working. Going back to goal one, under the yellow items. Develop employee training plan and eighteen. Develop approach, enhance collaborative IS capacity citywide, again, that's going to be pushed out to 1718, pending the IS director placement and filling of IS vacancies. Replace the website use, probably going to be pushed out to 1718 as well. Upgrade of various softwares, online business license renewal, e-file and online plan checks, online permitting, online TOT. So all these, and the employee working group. So on all these, we anticipate having some movement forward recommendations in 1718 to software that we're going to be recommending. The online T, commitments can now remit online of filling it out paper, they can do their payment online as well. Research user-friendly digital cabinet for public access, that's pushed out to 1718. Access to prop, to basic property information, that's pushed out to 1718. Research extended library hours and replace adult stations, again, that's pushed out to 1718. Develop employee survey and early or 1818 as well. Under goal two, upgrade of the dispatch CAD records management system, so the dispatch center is pending, the consortium that were, 1818, that will occur. Implement evacuation drills and exercises, so that will be addressed in 1718. Adopt drone ordinance, that will be addressed in 1718. Identify critical requiring TRFs that will be addressed in 1718. Under goal three, job applicant surveys, again, that will be developed in 1718 and employee development and training in 1718 as well. Under goal four, there was an item for Little League Miracle Field. I think that's probably be discussed during the strategic age structures. We are short on funding to accomplish that this year. I hope to have funding identified to accomplish that next year. Implement automated staffing technology for safety, again, that's also a technology committee. Research options for Eden as well as building a vehicle maintenance tracking system. That's all being pushed out to 1718 and possibly even further for the Eden system. ED utilizing the online policy updates, that will be discussed as part of 1718 strategic planning to include that. Evaluate available mobile apps for residents to report road problems. IS will- Public access to online catalog, ebooks, music apps through the library. The library director, library director anticipates to address that in 1718 during strategic planning. City clerk will address that again during strategic planning as well. And explore self-checkout through the library. Moving to goal five, under the yellow column, and then present the master fee schedule to city council, that's under finance, that will be presented in early spring of 2018. And again, there is no items ahead. For the quarter review of the KPIs, the report establishes some of the baselines of service delivered. So we have now three months of data and show you. It's a little hard to see. I believe you have the handout in front of you. So by summarizing, this, this data summarizes three months of each of these KPI permits, that's four per month during that three-month period. Plan checks 65 on average per month during that three-month period and so on. So this is going to help establish the baseline and over time, we'll be able to compare it against it. So that concludes the presentation. Is there any questions? I think, yes. Ken will present on the CIP update.
I just had one question scheduled. What was the, I know a lot of these IT ones, they've been pushed back intentionally due to, you know, recalibrating of our plan as far as IT development.
Yes.
But what was the reason for-
RFP during the month of May. So originally, I was anticipating getting that out in November, December of 2016, it didn't happen. So that pushes back that project of getting the master fee scheduled to you.
Employee survey strikes me as very important, probably one of the most important components of becoming an employer of choice. I'm just wondering why we're pushing that one out. Is it a financial constraint, resource?
No, I think it's really more a function of what are our priorities. We are still focused on recruitments. We're still focused on trying to resolve successfully labor negotiations. I don't realize in the timeframe that we thought we'd be able to.
Maybe we could consider a simpler solution. I just think we, now would be the time to ask. I don't think it has to be overly complicated. I'm not talking about how it helps their employees feel about us as an employer now versus later. Just for thought. There's another one. Oh, the Little League field.
That's the one- For that, for that purpose, yes.
What, what happened with that? Is it a, the-
We're in discussions with the school district about using Richmond Street for that potential. I know that Meredith indicated that, I don't know what we're evaluating this season, but there's some important information coming forth.
Right. So we have tossed around a number of ideas. I think the bottom line is that rather than renovating and field additions with the school district, that really the need is additional space. So that's kind of where, where we are now as far as where is that additional space. So from what I understand, Little League is using Raytheon's fields for the season, so we wanted to-
And then eventually, when the Raytheon project is developed, they're going to give us several acres for parkland over there as well. So that's a potential, maybe we don't spend all the money right now if we have the opportunity to develop.
My understanding of that is that it's probably a long time into the future and kind of a if scenario, if that happens. So, yeah, I think, you know, where we're sort of, you know, still deliberating is what, what is, is there any city property that's actually available to develop a new field? We're very limited on-
So any property that would be developed for the Miracle Field, which is for children with different abilities, would have to be in a distance and these parents, for the most part, can't drop their children off at the curb in Go Park, they need to have their children with them.
Right.
So that's an additional constraint.
I think currently, they're using the middle school.
They are using some of the school properties as well.
Okay.
Move on to the capital project update?
Thank you. So what we have for the first time as part of the strategic plan update, our, our second quarter, which is our first and second quarter review of our capital improvement program. For the strategic plan, our, our goals, as we said before in Public Works, we really touch upon all, upon our, all the goals that we have, but our key goal is number four, develop quality infrastructure and technology and really focus on the city's infrastructure. History here on our capital improvement program, you know, looking at from 2010 to 2015, you know, we were looking at a $5 million program annually. And one of the great investments the city staffed up, and not only did we staff up, we staffed up with some very high-quality folks. And we have, on the engineering staff of eight, we have six professional engineers licensed by the state who really can focus on capital projects. To approximately $13 million of programmed capital projects. And now with the carryover from those last year and the program for this year, we're looking at about almost $15 million with 48 projects. And this, this sheet, this slide is, is a snapshot of our budget for this year as well as in the lower half, the projects that remain from last year that we carried over into this year that we are handling. Investments in our program for things like our slurry seal, replacements of our water mains, replacements of our sewer mains, and then specific projects like say the athletic field turf replacement as well as the police station. So for, for this year, budget was a little over $9 million. And then with the carryover from last year's projects of a little over $5 million, we're looking at that close to $15 million total for this fiscal year. So as a review of the first two quarters of completed projects, and, and we will define completed as, as the legal definition of completed, meaning we've brought it to council, we've accepted the work, recommended filing of a notice of completion. We see things on here like storm drain repairs, facility improvements such as elevator refurbishments, our major Richmond Street improvement project, significant water main improvements and- Continuing in that, in that vein, you know, it's real important for this city with its aging infrastructure of water and sewer to hit those hard, and we are catching up on, on those programs and of our water pipe replaced and almost two and a half miles of our sewer main repaired or replaced. And again, significant investment into our pavement and roadway infrastructure by doing Richmond Street as well as the parking and beautification. So in the end, at this point, we've installed about $4.5 million of improvements through March. That's actually 14.7 million total, it's still on a, on a hard-line basis, less than 50%, but when it comes to the program, we really do ramp up as the year, fiscal year goes on. And as a slide coming, we'll show you, we have some really great stuff coming up. Pictures, there are many pictures we could show of Richmond Street, for example, but we know what kind of condition that public right-of-way was in with invasive ficus trees destroying public infrastructure and bringing into a, and we all know what that looks like And one more picture of, of a recent project that was completed, but again, to the definition officially completed next quarter, or this quarter, is our rec park lighting at the tennis court. Of course, plenty of pictures we could show of water and sewer main improvements, but they're not as glamorous, let's say. So we are, as you can tell by all the exclamation points, we're very excited about what's coming up. From the fire station and police, there are highway resurfacing project is a major improvement. Mariposa water main replacement is going on and we have about 560 water meters that we've replaced with smart meters, which is a great benefit to, to all of us, Public Works and customer at campus will be happening. And plenty more to come. So I have city engineer Leifan Shu, who I've made stay here, so feel free to ask any questions that you want. So thank you.
So I have one question. On the, the electrical conduits being broken on Main Street, can we look at what that would cost to replace those or to fix those?
Yeah, certainly. First of all, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem and council members. We're the city for, to see how much it's going to cost and we can certainly see whether it's any budget to repair it and we can look into, try to fit it in this year, so.
I know I, I talked to you, Greg, about the beautification or the, the planters on Main Street, the replacement, we're looking at the cost of what it would take to replace the planters.
We're talking things like that?
Yes.
Yes, we are, we are looking at that and trying to cost that out and get the logistics down on that.
Well, I think we're blind, things you showed, Ken, there's certainly things that we depend on, like you said earlier today, from the time we wake up until we go to sleep. So thank you for great progress. And maybe we need to revisit hanging baskets and come up with sanction and maintenance and replacement, maybe more banners or, you know, there are cities who recognize the people in their town who serve in the military and they sell those banners to recognize people or we, for diff- so maybe we start looking at something else.
And then also the, looking at the newspaper racks, replacement of the newspaper racks, and there's, I hear there's a lot of bootleg newspaper racks.
Right. That is, that is something we are looking at in our inventory. So we're trying to make sure we have a complete baseline to go forward with, notify those folks that are in violation and do an education and outreach to make sure it's the city infrastructure, city news racks that are there and that periodically's in.
And then do we need to look at the, our practice on, because I know, I'm not sure when we decided that the city was going to own those newspaper racks, but I'm not sure if that has been looked at in a long time and what investment we want to actually put into for newspaper racks and where they should be placed.
That we can look at?
Comments? Well, thank you. So now it's time for reports. Manager.
Mayor, members of council, I'm sure you're going to talk about state of the city, but it was, it was refreshing, I think heartwarming as a city manager to see how much work the departments have done this year, how much work our, our city manager here in El Segundo. I did want to officially welcome Ken Berkman as our public works director. He's been our acting public works director for six months now, but, but today he accepted the full-time position. Ken comes to us with 20 experience. He's worked for LA County, he's worked for Culver City, he's worked for Agura Hills, and he's worked for three of the largest private construction and engineering firms in Southern California. So great combination of, of experience, a degree in engineering from Maryland, working with Ken going forward. Joe was going to provide a quick update on, on the Calpers Committee schedule, and Chief Tavera is going to provide an update on the-
So brief update on the ad hoc committee for Calpers pension. The first kickoff meeting is scheduled for June 5th, 1:30, I'm sorry, yes, 1:30 to 3:00 PM in the ELC. So that includes Tim Drew Boils, council member Dr. Brand, the city manager, myself. There's going to be one representative from each department, either the department head or their designated manager. And then a representative from each of the primary unit, representative and alternative representative in case the primary cannot make it. And then the finance manager, Dave Davis, will also be there. Once we get the meetings going, maybe towards the middle or end of objectives, we are possibly looking at getting a consultant to facilitate some of the latter objectives. So again, I mentioned June fifth is the first meeting. We'll have one or two additional meetings in June. A potential recommendation to City Council during strategic planning for the August eighth meeting. Did you want me to go over any objectives at all? Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So I believe it was two council meetings ago, Mayor Pro Tem Boils asked for staff to look at the potential for crosswalks at the campus El Segundo soccer fields. Public Works and the Police Department have been working on that issue.
Good evening, look at it. Our traffic division and the Berkman took a look at it about two weeks ago, and we've kind of resolved the issue is we're going to put a crosswalk in there. Really depends upon whether both, on one side of the crosswalk, the north side, we have, and do it in the T will be at, I believe, at Campus Square, Campus Drive. If we find through ADA that it has to have a cutout that will be towards the end of the year, well, in fact, we don't need it, it will be sooner. Ken is working with the Attorney's Office to determine if that is an ADA or not. As soon as we get that done, we'll let you.
That's great, thank you. What do you anticipate the cost being to the city? I'm just curious, Public Works and just to get that done.
Well, just for the painting of the crosswalk, it's something that could be absorbed into the budget with our existing crews, something we do regularly. The curb cut for an ADA ramp would be, and I would guess, two grand, somewhere in there for a ramp of that size for the crosswalk.
Okay. And then if we're going to go to the same extent that we do on Main Street with the, I know we're replacing the crosswalk light, blinking thousand? Because what I've seen is the evening is really the problem, visibility is diminished, people are flying through there.
Well, it could be, you know, we're doing at eighty thousand, is it four or five? So four, four lighted crosswalks, I mean, if we can change order and piggyback it on to the existing contractor that's working at Main Street, that could reduce the cost. So maybe it's a linear cost, you know, to five, four and eighty, it's twenty, so it could be.
Is that something you guys could, you were saying, Mike?
Well, it just depends where the power comes from, too. There's a lot of issues that come with it.
It would be solar, we could do a solar there. That's what we're doing on Main.
Because those kids are out there till, like, my team was out there till nine o'clock at night. It's not obvious, particularly in the evening, so.
There's cars probably parked along that side.
Right.
Is there any way we could put something on the road to slow it, not, not a bump, but some type of?
Rumbles, a rumble strip of some sort.
To at least notify.
Higher speed area, but it's something that could be installed.
Can we use reflective paint? Because my concern is all the lights in the world aren't going to slow people down if they don't want to slow down.
Right, neither will a crosswalk.
And maybe we have signage out there that say children.
Yeah, and cumulatively, all these things add up for our maintenance staff to monitor and take care and inventory. And half of the roadway is private, we only own half of it as a city. So those types of things are something we need to look at. You know, we could certainly agree that we can put the crosswalk there and not be at mid-block right by the entrance, but at the corner of Campus Square West, where there is a ramp. And maybe we do find out that we do not need the ADA ramp, but we can consider a multitude of design features to try and make it as safe as possible.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk?
Sure. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that Mona and I are in the process of researching for consolidating the elections that we have to do. But we have, so we'll probably get back to you in July on our findings and we'll possibly make a decision then.
Thank you. Our city treasurer gave her a report earlier this evening.
Really busy the last four or five days around El Segundo. Besides a fantastic gala with the Ed Foundation on Friday night, that was the event of the year. We had, on Saturday night, Elder Fest at Jocelyn Center, where we celebrated Sharon this year for all of her efforts in town. And Biz Now had a future of El Segundo event, I believe that was landed and very interesting. So lots to do around here. I'd like to say that, and salute PSM for the work they did here in the city. It's unfortunate, the confluence of circumstances that ended that, but I don't want us to lose sight of the good work in marketing that they did to put the city in a good space. I know the Phelps Station, and I'm glad PSM still has accounts and is located here in town. I'd like us to think about going forward, the possibility of taxes from these Airbnb-type short-term rentals, like other cities are exploring here. It's happening here in town. We're not collecting anything from it, and it's really not fair to our hotel operators that are skating around it. So I think we can learn from surrounding cities of what they've found out works and doesn't work and save a lot of time. I'd also like to get a report of support for the El Segundo Unified School District by the city. What are those in-kind services that are occurring and what does all that add up to? It's been four or five years since, I'd just like to be current on that. And then finally, we have a beautiful centennial seal here behind us, and I'd like us to consider the possibility of adopting a very ugly seal that we've been using for a long, long time. Everybody gets pretty happy when they see those colors up there, et cetera. And I understand we own the, maybe we should use it for just more than two thousand seventeen, but into the future. So food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Councilmember Prostek?
Yes, I want to also thank the, I talked to a lot of the participants, the police and fire, and they said they had a huge crowd, much more than they expected. And thank you to all the people, the officers that gave the tours. It was a great day at the gala, as Don mentioned, it was a wonderful, wonderful event, attended by more than eight hundred people. And then I wanted to give an update on the IT committee. They unanimously voted to propose to the city the new IT projects that will be coming on board, so I just want to make sure that we move forward on that and get that person in place fairly quickly, so that we can ensure that the class, the replacement of the class system gets underway and that we get all of our pre. And then I'd also like to explore the possibility of having all of the committees and commission and committees report, give a report to the council on either a quarterly or bi-yearly basis, and what it would take to, happening with the committees and how valuable they are to the town. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, when I sat and looked at the agenda and saw the presentation from the Cooper Department on, re, couch that one out there, I initially thought that, wow, you know, what's the refinery doing differently to improve their safety? And then I heard the presentation and, you know, I was looking at, you know, trying to, the elements of process safety management include all the things, the root cause analysis, the human factors, the hazardous analysis and hazops, hazardous waste management and everything else. I didn't hear anything that, you know, and I've been retired six, a lot of expertise over there in the refinery, so I kind of questioned, what are we going to be doing on top of what they've already done? They've got some subject matter expertise over there. I don't know how we're going to get involved with that, but I, years over there that, it seems to me that there may be a lot of duplication of effort, there might be a way to streamline that. But we've bumped our budgets up significantly to handle Cooper issues here, and I don't know that there's going to be a true benefit out of that. I question the presentation that isn't already, you know, thoroughly being implemented at the refinery. And if there are any issues over there, we can work to, I guess, to solve, to do that. So I question why we would want to jump in and try to manage something that may or may not provide any benefit for the amount of effort that we're going to put into it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Saturday, myself, well, both my son and I loved it, had a great time, especially the explosions on Main Street, that was a kick. And, and the police and fire were just such a welcome audience to all the participants, it was great. Tour of the police station, the whole nine yards, awesome. One that supported the city today, that was a wonderful turnout, great venue. And congrats to Carol and the Ed Foundation for an incredible gala as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was gone last weekend, so I missed the best gala ever, public safety. So also, your comment about Airbnbs, Dr. Brand, I think the COG is beginning to look at those, so maybe we can get some more information also, which would be the fifteen cities in the county that are in the COG, and I can get that to you. Reports from committees and commissions, I would like to see that from council members, too. We all go to a lot of meetings and represent, and I would like to hear what's going on at the meetings we attend. I usually try to hit on the meetings that I attended and if there was anything that was noteworthy. Part of the whole half morning was that I got to moderate a panel with Luke Robitaille, so, and Tim Harris from the Lakers. So, yes, the hometown fair, since we last met, that was a wonderful event in Library Park, so thank you to Meredith and her staff there. It's really a wonderful annual event that we look forward to in town. You can see everybody there. Also, I know that Carol and I attended the ribbon cutting for Two Guns Espresso Coffee on Main Street. We're really happy, they're most successful store. I recently was appointed to the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee, so I get to help decide what's important for us to address on that. And I want to give a shout out to the El Segundo Police Department and the El Segundo League, and I think it was really valuable. There was a lot of feedback from it, but I talked to kids who were at the school and they were told what to do. Nobody knew it was a drill. And the feedback I got from kids was they thought it was really valuable. There was, I guess there was probably some texting between parents and they didn't know, they didn't know what was going on, but I was told it was really effective because they didn't know it was a drill. So thank you for doing that, conducting a drill to keep our young people. Mayor Pro Tem said today was our state of the city, it was a really wonderful event. It was held at Insight, which is a former Raytheon building that's been repurposed for creative space. It's gorgeous. It was two hours of preparation for everything that's like that. So I in particular want to thank Barbara Voss. I was blessed to be able to represent us and talk about the really wonderful things that go on in our city and all the people who were involved in the thing, but all the people that we hired. But Barbara did the heavy lifting. She wrote the speech, also the chamber, did a lot of preparation, so I just got to represent. But there were so many people who were involved in it, so I just want to thank them all for. So that, I believe, is all that I have. So with that, we'll go back to public communications. And see none? We have no memorials tonight? We're adjourned, nine fifty-seven, oh man.